Upd in nineteen ninety, the scenic highway setback, and those homes were built early two thousands.
So when they proposed it just like this here, instead of a green color lot forty-eight, did they actually have a drawing as to what that scenic highway is going to look like with that community?
They did, mhm.
Okay.
Yeah, and there is a little bit of a wider width there because it does serve as some water way there. So it is a little bit of a wider area.
Okay, but if it was brought before the commission as on the map drawn in, this is what it's going to look like?
Chairman, if I could add a little to that.
Yes.
The Four Seasons was developed as a one large project. This is coming in with a project that was partially built. And so they have difficulties with fifteen, thirteen to fifteen year span. So there's a lot of difficulties that we have to work through. And one of which is that highway, scenic highway setback. If this were to come in as a one whole project brand new, then obviously would be under one ownership. And we would ask that one owner, whether the developer is or builder, to improve everything along Florida, Lake, Underground, all of those things. But because this happened in two different phases, and possibly three phases, you have to kind of take consideration of that span of almost fifteen years in between developments. So it's not as clean development as you would like it to see and that we would like it to see, frankly. If this was one new project coming in, of course, we would ask all these improvements to be done prior to pulling any permits in the beginning. They would have to get all these perimeters, perimeter wall, the landscaping, street improvements. All of those would have to be in place before they can start the construction. But because of the difference in span of when they got built, we have to work with what we have.
I have one question for you. There was several concerns and comments in regards to re-noticing and process and everything like that. I'm no expert in any of that from the city attorney, is there any concern?
So I think the misconception is that there's a state law or something that we have to abide by. But for site development review and development review in general, it is just an exercise of the city's police power. So there's no noticing statute. All we have to go by is what the municipal code says that the notice should have. So for notice, it says that notice of public hearing shall contain the time and place of the hearing, and the location, and the proposed use of the subject property. So that's what the planning commission does.
Okay, anything else for staff? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. And is the applicant available?
Yeah.
Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
With permission, am I allowed to take this off to speak?
I don't know.
I'll just pull my nose down. My name is Dan Boyd. I'm vice president for D.R. Horton, and I'm representing the project this evening before each of you. And Mr. Chair and members of planning commission, I first want to say thank you to the staff. This has definitely been one of those more difficult projects to get our hands around. But we're nevertheless very excited to be here this evening. This project was initially developed in its totality about twenty years ago. During the recession in two thousand and seven, it came to a stop. At that point, there were approximately a hundred and seven remaining lots, of which D.R. Horton's acquiring eighty of those lots in the three or four mentioned track maps that staff outlined. This evening, there's no question we're going to have a lot of comments from the public. And we are absolutely prepared to address each and one of those comments. I believe there's material information and facts that need to be brought forward to the administrative record this evening so that you are more comfortable analyzing this project. There are reasons and causes for why we did and why staff moved and worked with us to develop a way to develop this project, given its broken state over many, many years. Obviously, over a period of twenty years, things change. Architecture changed, market demand changes, housing needs changed. And so we understand that. And so from a compatibility standpoint, we were very pleased to see that staff did a very thorough job with their analysis in terms of not only confirming the design guidelines, but the consistency with the zoning and the general plan. Those are all fairly mechanical aspects that doesn't rise to the level of the community concerns. So if the chair pleases, I can move forward and address some of the comments today, which may minimize presentations later.
Please do, and if I can back you up one minute, we need an address for the record, please.
Oh, twenty-two eighty Woodlow Circle, Suite one hundred, Corona, California, nine-two-eight-eight-zero.
Thank you, please continue.
I'm going to go ahead and take the comments in order. I will be brief and summarize my responses. If you need additional detail, I'd be happy to do that. Compatibility, the single story issue versus a second story issue, the architecture, and the kinds of things we heard from the very beginning are derived from adherence and compliance to your design guidelines. When a developer comes to the city, he's handed these documentations, and he basically is asked to comply. The guidelines are just that, they're guidelines. They're not authored to be strict adherence to each and every letter because that would take away the creativity and the ability to adjust architecture as time evolves. Certainly in this case, that's a benefit. The use of single story seems to be, and second story, I'm sorry, seems to be a rather hot topic, if you will. There's nothing in your guidelines or standards or the zoning code that precludes the use of second story. We believe, and we're a very large builder, and we've been referred to as out-of-towners, corporate giants. But let me tell you, we have been very successful in our company that started with seven hundred dollars many, many years ago by paying attention to the market. We firmly believe that exclusive use of single stories today is not marketable and does not meet the demands of our current home buyers. We've done research in the city of Hemet. We want to be in the city of Hemet, and we want to be a good neighbor. But I will be very honest with you, we want to be successful in the city of Hemet. And unlike some broken projects that have been dormant for years and years and years, we've got a track barrier coming in and cleaning up and trying to resurrect original approvals, which is sometimes more difficult than starting fresh. But in this case in particular, the use of second stories is very critical to our success. Families with children do not mix well exclusively with single story homes. Younger couples, elderly couples, those that don't want stairs and second stories, perfect application for the single story, and we have that as part of the variety of our homeownership opportunities. But second stories are ideally suited for younger families, move-up families that need room to expand and to enjoy and raise their families. The other item is that when we plot a single story home, it typically has a larger footprint, consuming more of your net lot area. Second stories typically don't. So we have a variety of lot sizes and usability. All of your design guidelines and codes support what we have presented. Next item is a property trash. We were just recently notified that we had a trash condition on the model complex. And there was some graffiti as well, so we dispatched our local crews and we cleaned that up. If there are additional weeds, it sounds like from your recent visit, there are some additional weeds, I commit and assure you that the site will be cleaned. We're just starting the development process. So we inadvertently placed some temporary fencing on a property we didn't own, we took that down. We inadvertently placed some signage on property we did not own, we took that down. So we assured to the commissioners this evening and to the homeowners, the surrounding community, that we'll definitely clean that up because that's a marketing issue. We don't want to market anything that's not presentable, so we'll definitely move on that. The next item we heard was relative to CCNRs, and there's some clarification needs to be made here. When this original project was developed, it basically had a CCNRs for the project that was developed. But there were no CCNRs for three-one-six-zero and dash-one respectfully. There was CCNRs recorded for two-five-one-six-eight. However, there are no associations in place for two-five-one-six-eight, just CCNRs. Our plan is to come a part of that existing CCNRs in two-five-one-six-eight. And on three-one-six-zero and dash-one, the seventy-four lots will create new CCNRs for that project. At this point, the rear fencing that has been mentioned, and staff did a very accurate job of that. The existing cedar fence, although it does look old and tethered and it's been there for many years, I'm quite sure. But a fact that has to be brought forward to your attention is that behind that fence, the homeowners have made substantial improvements. Some have retaining walls with planters, they have trees, they have a lot of mature items that gone into play behind that fence. D.R. Horton is not and will not step on someone else's property and take that liability. So typically in this situation, we build our fence within our property on our side of the fence, if you will. If the adjacent homeowner wants to take advantage of that new vinyl fencing, it can simply at their own expense and liability take down whatever improvements is necessary to access that vinyl fencing. Lot forty-eight, let's spend a few minutes here because there's a lot of misinformation. And I'm glad and have the opportunity to explain. When we originally conducted our due diligence in two thousand and nineteen, we immediately, we immediately brought to the attention of the city that lot forty-eight is a scenic corridor requirement. It is a condition of approval, and it remains a condition of approval. The problem here is that despite several attempts to reach the former developer of the totality of the project, we were not able to secure communication. So the city took that position and ultimately worked very hard and ultimately contacted, was able to contact, the owner of lot forty-eight, which is the current owner of the twenty-seven lots. At that point in time, we raised the red flag that we can't step on someone else's property. It's unfortunate that an error was made with the original approval. That lot should have been conveyed to the city. And with the first development permit issued with the former development, that scenic corridor should have been developed, consistent with your comments this evening, but it wasn't. Mistakes upon mistakes were made. So what ultimately has happened is we went to the city and said, we've got to find a way to move forward or this project, we can't buy it. And so we worked very closely with the staff and with the city manager's office and with all the department heads. And we originally came up with a fair share concept. I believe Carol, one of the community members, basically came up with that idea. We had that idea from the very beginning, a fair share concept. The problem here was that the city engineer did not think that would ultimately work, particularly when the city did not own the property. So what happened next was very factual that the former developer had made a verbal commitment to staff saying, I'll go ahead and dedicate the property to the city. Evidence to that concurrence, the city engineering department prepared at their expense and necessary conveyance documents, the dedication documents, and the intent was to bring that into the fold of the city. If the city could control ownership of that, it could be handled differently. At that point, it was about when the COVID hit us and the former developer never responded to the city, nor could the city execute the necessary documents to receive that property, which then led to, yet what do we do now? Do we just walk away? Do we walk away from this opportunity? No, we stuck with it. And we stuck with it because we're committed to this community and we're committed to the success of this. So we scratched our heads and we came back and we met with staff again. As a result of that, there was a new concept that basically it was an equitable distribution of responsibility. And so since that the fair, the fair share concept didn't pan out and the ownership issues remained at large, we had to come up with a way to enforce the condition of approval, yet not step on the property. So we came up with the concept and we presented that to the city council as part of the undergrounding waiver, which part of that staff report referenced to the attachment. And the attachment clarified a number of items that we worked closely with staff to work out so that we had a clear path moving forward. That clarification did the following, factually. There are two components to lot forty-eight. There's the hardscape improvements and your softscape improvements. We submitted cost estimates for engineering staff review, and they confirmed that there was an equitable distribution of financial responsibility. Horton, since you can't step on that property, and since the property owner never able to dedicate the property to the city, and we don't own the property as part of our transaction, we stepped up and we're doing right now in planned development, all the hardscape improvements, which is limited to the curb, the gutter, the sidewalks, and those kinds of things. The softscape, i.e. just the landscaping portion, was deferred to the end of the project. And that was an equitable distribution that city council reviewed and ultimately supported the city manager's report and staff report in that regard. So now where are we? Well, as of this evening, we are working with Caltrans to move forward with those hardscape improvements because they're within their right of way. We are moving forward with, actually, the, one of the misstatements was, we are undergrounding the communications lines. But let's talk a little bit about that because there's also the Edison lines. Staff and the applicant, Horton, came together and we analyzed Lake and Florida. In the situation before Lake, the homes that are existing down the street have above-ground utility lines. They're existing. Don't quote me, there's probably three or four lines that are there now. There was one pole on our side, and so staff realized that it would be a hardship simply to underground for the purposes of one pole wherein the existing poles were never lowered in the past. That was their justification that was made to city council as well as to the city manager during those discussions. On Florida, a little different scenario, we are lowering the communication lines. But those lines cross Florida in two locations with a span of approximately three hundred feet. Speculation is that there are some ratter mature trees across the street, and one can only speculate that they did that to avoid conflict. That was years ago, but here and again, to underground that would be a hardship against the project because of that span going across the highway, you would have to go across Florida twice. But we made that discretion and working with staff, it came to the conclusion that it warranted a waiver. The cities are allowed to issue waivers on undergrounding. So we presented that case, city council approved that. And that was the, how the factual representation of those lines came about. The next item that we heard is basically compatibility and the architecture. I want to speak a moment to that. We have built thousands of homes in the United States. And yes, admittedly, we're one of the largest, if not the largest, home builder, which has some advantages. We have the ability to financially commit to a community and commit to a project and commit to completing it. And this is what we're doing here. But we're going to make that commitment in concert with our ability to succeed, and that's how we come up with our architecture. We examined the existing architecture, and admittedly, it was a well-executed project. I think today it's stand the test of time, and by and large, there's some maintenance issues in that community. But by and large, the homes look good, and their single stories seem to work very well twenty years ago. Certainly when it stopped selling or developing back in two thousand and seven. Would we do that again today? Probably not, because we would not be successful. We're very careful that when we design a project, that we complement the community in which we're doing business in. We're smart about the architectural theming and components. We're exceptionally well and good at execution. What we don't want to do is place a maintenance burden onto a homeowner, a young family that has to maintain architecture over a period of time. So we're very careful with what we do. We do sufficient amount of articulation that expands upon and accentuates the architectural theming. And by and large, we've been very successful. And we believe that this product, which we've developed in other communities, has done exceptionally well. Moreover, as I previously noted, the floor planning is critical from the standpoint that we're designed to the current market needs. Twenty years ago is not today. So I think staff was, was right on spot when they made that notation in the staff report and discussed it, sold that before you, that things and times changes. We would not build what was built twenty years ago, I don't think we could be successful with it. I'm not saying that's a bad thing for the existing homes, that's a good thing, they're well executed. But we're building to today's marketplace, today's Hemet marketplace. So we feel very proud with this project, and I expect that we're going to hear a lot more comments. But I think it's also very important, I leave you at this part of the presentation, that we need to pay attention to the facts. We don't need a lot of indoor window, we don't need a lot of speculation. And so I am here this evening to do the very best of my ability to share with you the facts of how we got here this evening. And we hope that you appreciate the ability for us to work closely with staff to take a broken project that's been dormant for over a couple of decades, nearly a couple of decades, and to move the project forward. We believe housing is critical to the city of Hemet. We believe there's a demand here, and so we're very excited. And I also want to add, not to be self-aggrandizing, but we've also done some similar projects that had similar challenges in the city of San Jacinto. Palisades is one of our projects, and we have a couple others. And we work closely with that city, very similar, if not identical scenario. Staff worked with us there to kind of undo things and rebuild things. That's what we're going to do here. We were exceptionally successful in San Jacinto, and we think that formula is going to do very well here. To the point that we're already excited about looking at new opportunities, and we have one already identified. But the bottom line is, this may sound greedy, but it's true. If we're not successful, we can't develop. So I think it's really important, if I were a planning commissioner, the first thing we have to listen to is the community, no question. And we want to listen to the community. They had a community meeting, we were not invited. There was assertions that we did not reach out to the former property owner. That is not true. We reached out through the appropriate channels, through our transactional partners, namely our seller. We worked very hard with staff to come up with solutions to issues to move this project forward. And those solutions are represented to you and for you to judge this evening, to see whether or not this project has a merit to move forward. I appreciate your time at this point, and of course, I'm available for additional comments and questions after the public has an opportunity to speak their concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd. Is there any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, just real quick, just to clarify, lot forty-eight, sorry, I keep going on that a little bit. But so with, with the new approach and that fair share or the, which, whatever the terminology, you did the hardscape, and then the twenty-five foot setback is done by the other property owner upon completion. Is that, is that?
That's accurate. I just want to make sure it's clear on the record that when we presented the analysis between the hardscape and the softscape, there became a solution that we could come up with an equitable way to disperse that responsibility. We're not taking the condition away, there is no condition that's going away. And so what we did is we came up with a modification that was approved that basically we're going to move forward as we're doing now with the hardscape improvements. And you are correct that the softscape, the landscaping portion, will be completed no later than the end of the project, obviously. And frankly speaking, I think one of the community members had a very valid point. Why isn't that happening in the very front of the project? Why, why, why is Horton not doing it now? Because we don't own the property. We don't have the legal right to step on someone else's property. And frankly speaking, neither does the city. So recently, I was informed by one of the community members that the former developer had made a reach out and said, well, if the city wants it, I'd be happy to dedicate it. They can follow Emmett Domain. Emmett Domain to acquire the property? I was a little baffled when I heard that. It was hearsay, it came through, however, in writing as part of your comments and administrative record that Emmett Domain, why would the city want to pay for something that's a condition of approval? So that just kind of continues kind of the storyline. We wished that we could acquire lot forty-eight, we wished that the city could have lot forty-eight. But the way the project was left, it was an error back when the property owner transferred the property title to our seller. It was an error that lot forty-eight wasn't included in that transaction, otherwise we wouldn't have that problem.
I understand, what I'm, what I'm just trying to understand is that, so you're going to construct the right of way, which is what, twelve feet, fifteen feet?
About, yeah, I'd have to look at the plan.
Um, there's no, there's no landscaping as part of that?
You've got, help me here a little bit, H.P., but we've got curb and gutter. And then behind curb and gutter, you have right of way. And in that right of way, we have the sidewalk. And H.P., I don't recall, do we have any landscaping between the back of curb and the sidewalk?
No, what we have is, we have to go with the full ultimate right of way of Florida Avenue. So once D.R. Horton completes their plan check through Caltrans, we'll have exact dimensions and measurements of when, where the curb and gutter will start. And from that, they'll do curb and gutter, sidewalk, and up to the twenty-five feet setback area.
Is the sidewalk, but the sidewalk's not going to be the full twelve, fifteen feet?
No, sidewalk will be a five feet.
So the remainder of that's just going to be what, DG, dirt, weeds?
No, so again, the ultimate right of way of Florida may push the sidewalk up to the twenty-five foot landscaping area. And the other portion of thirteen feet will be part of the roadway. So it just depends on how that geometry works. So if you're looking at a thirteen feet of right of way, and if the curb and gutter and sidewalk is five feet plus six inches or what have you, then remember that depending on how the Florida Avenue gets developed or the ultimate right of way is, then they'll place that sidewalk and the curb, curb face pushing closer to the landscaping area. Which means the section that you're talking about, the remainder, will be part of the roadway, not part of the landscape.
So it'll be, it'll be behind the, face the?
Correct, it'll be in front of the curb, if you will.
It'll be behind the curb, in front of the sidewalk?
No, this will be monolithic park, monolithic sidewalk, which means the sidewalk will be curb adjacent.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, H.P., so the right, the right of way being thirteen feet is from face the curb to the back of the right of way, right? Is that, is that the measurement that we're referring to? Is that?
Correct.
Okay, so then there's a five foot, all that I'm getting at is that there's going to obviously be potentially a scenario where the twenty-five foot is not done as part of what's being proposed here. And there will be a twenty-five foot swath of what it is now, which likely the city, the fire department would be sending letters for plea debatement and things of that nature. But obviously, it's going to be an eyesore. Within the hardscape area, if we have a five foot sidewalk and we have a thirteen foot or whatever right of way, there's a six foot section of something. Is there, and generally, there would be, you know, a public right of way streetscape, and then beyond that would be something else. Is there, there's, is there any landscape component to that six feet that would possibly shield aesthetically what's, what is likely to happen if the, both seller, both owners are not able to work this out?
Correct, so that six feet that you're talking about, that may be part of the roadway, not a landscaping section, depending on how Caltrans does their roadway. So when the geometry comes back from Caltrans, if they say we need additional six feet for the roadway, then you could put your curb, gutter and sidewalk, and that'll chew up your thirteen feet. So I don't know what that would be until Caltrans gives that design back.
So once we get that back, if there's extra space in there, do, is that, I mean, that would be, Caltrans maintained landscape on the?
Correct.
It's not, it's not a city, so would that be something that would match our, our beautiful center median project that's going on right now down seventy-four? Is that, you know, some sort of stamped concrete or something like that? Just looking for something that would potentially aesthetically shield.
Sure. Sure. At this point, I cannot give you the answer on that until we get the design back.
Okay. Yeah, it's a precarious situation, but the conditions of approval as written in here really don't apply to you if you proceed the way that you're proposing. Yeah, it says it's going to be done at the end of the project, but your responsibility, based on your proposal, is just to do the hardscape, and then someone else is going to do the 25-foot.
And that was based on an equitable distribution of costs when we presented that engineer's office.
Sorry, but for the residents and for everyone else driving down Florida Avenue, it's really not part of the conditions of approval to have that 25-foot done, for all intents and purposes.
Well, no, I'd like to, if I may, correct that just a little bit. The condition of approval remains intact, correct, H.P.? Okay. The condition implementation has changed to keep with the intent of the approved condition. And so Horton has agreed to move forward with all the hardscape improvements, the right-of-way improvements, dealing with Caltrans. We don't own Lot 48, and therefore, I just, I know, I just want to reassert that we can't legally go on that property. So your answer is correct, that the distribution was tagged to the end of the project. Now, if someone buys, let's say, those 27 lots in two weeks, well, guess what, they're going to have that obligation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for the applicant?
I do. And you brought it up, so I wanted to kind of just ask a quick question. Thank you for being here, Mr. Boyd, right?
Yeah.
Thank you for being here. You address a lot of questions, a lot of emails, you're very well spoken, I really appreciate it. You brought up Palisades, I personally have been there, I'm a Realtor, I've been there with a client, so I'm very familiar with the community, the project, everything. So that, for people that haven't been there, this development has two-thirds single-story. They have three floor plans, a one, two, three, one and two being a single-story, three being a two-story. What difference between that project, Palisades in San Jacinto versus Citrus Point in Hemet, what's the difference for D.R. Horton that they're doing two two-stories versus two single-stories and one two-story? Which I'm sure what's set up at Palisades would make the existing community much happier.
Right, no, I appreciate the question, and the answer is as follows, two parts actually. One is a little bit different number of lots, and so we had a second, we had a need and justification for a second, excuse me, a second single-story plan. You get too many single-story plans with that variation, we have an issue. That project you're referring to is also basically a combination of one and two stories, and that's been very successful for us. The numbers are a little different, I can't tell you there's any magical difference between the marketplaces because we are pretty close to one another, but every deal is a little different, and that deal had a little different opportunity for us for additional single-stories, where this one hasn't. And so we basically, I should note for the record, when you look at the mix of single-story here versus two-story, we're over about, we're close to 30%, 29 and some change. So our mix is actually very heavily weighted for single-story, given our three plans. But another interesting fact, Tiffany, if I may, if you look at the totality of the project, you're really looking at about 75% single-story to 25% second-stories. So the totality of the whole project in whole, that's a very impressive number. So I think that's what we looked at, saying, there are a lot there already, we want to provide variety for the Hemet homeowner, and I bet you that at the end of the day we'll be very successful with both products, but it's going to attract likely different consumers.
Is Palisades an infill project as well?
Yeah, I would say.
Existing homes that were built by?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's my thought.
Yeah, in that definition, correct.
Right, yeah, thank you.
Well, is that community within the realm as adjacent properties, or the neighboring community?
They're mostly, honestly, I think they're more two-stories, I think they built more single-stories than were already existing, so. And that's why I want to know, because I've been there and seen it, why so many more, so.
But you're also correct, there are existing homes.
Right, similar, are they adjacent, similar to the adjacent properties though? Or are they?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, because my question is, is with your proposal, I mean, we have McSweeney's out here that you can do two-story, one-story, mix them around, do what you like. Why did you, obviously for profit reasons, but when you're looking at the existing property the way it is, including those three model homes that are just going to be parked right in the middle of the entire development, why did they choose to do more two-story than one-story, or try to keep it uniformed to one-story?
Well, we look, what we try and do to answer your direct question, is we try and come up with a rather pro-rata share percentage of plotting. So the general rule is a third, and a third, and a third, we kind of like to see how close we can get to that kind of number. But moreover, and that gets tweaked, obviously, and so our decision, our business decision was based on the local economics, the demand, and the fact that we are up against an existing project that has obviously all single-story, but that in itself didn't meet our market requirements and our satisfaction that we could make a successful project if it were to go all single-story, because we know factually that there's different buyers here in Hemet that are looking for different things.
Thank you for your interest for building in the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
We're now going to hear from the public. Stephanie, is it prudent to hear teleconferencing first, or you want to hear people that are here? What do you think the best way to do it?
Sorry, it really doesn't matter in terms of the order, all we need to do is make sure that everybody is heard, so if the commission would like to hear the teleconferencing first, we can. It might be a little cumbersome compared to a list that you have available to you right here for people who are present.
Okay, yeah, I think that's right. So if you're here to speak to this matter by teleconference, we would like to hear from you now, just one at a time, and again, kudos to the IT guys, whoever did that, because we're having some success tonight on this, it seems like people can hear when they're calling in, so if we can hear from, starting with anybody, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, hello, I'm Jenny Antoinette Mazingo, and I live on Jelly Way. I back up to these weeds, I back up to where you are getting ready to build. If you saw all of the concerns and complaints that we had, it would have been nice for you to reach out to us so that we could sit down and understand and communicate with you. However, I'm calling because I am very angry. First of all, I don't want anybody looking down on me in my backyard. I did not buy here so that I could have people looking down on me, and I use my yard. That's number one. Number two, the weeds, you kind of like blew that off. This is fire season, and we are afraid all the time. We never know if we're coming home and there's going to be a fire because of these weeds. There's no firewall around them, as you said, they are built right up against our fences. Number three, you are going to put white vinyl fencing against this awful terrible wood fence that has been here. My house was built in 2005, so it's 15 years. If we want to take it out, because it is going to be an eyesore, there is going to be a separation. You are causing me to put money out. You are causing us to have to pay out when perhaps we don't have that in our budgets. If I take my back fence out, I am going to have to extend the sides or buy white vinyl fencing to connect to yours. You're leaving us vulnerable, because your track is going to be closed in, and varmints or whatever can come in and out. That's number three. Number four, are you going to put a light in so that we don't have people coming through here crazy, driving like fools? And you know, you say you have another project that you've just gotten, you're very proud of it, and I know your work, you do good work. Why don't you put the two stories over there and let us have what we have always had? Those are going to be eyesores, you're going to have one right on the corner when you first come in here, and that's going to be standing up there by itself, the parking lot on Lake. You're going to have them, the way you have them situated, it's going to make our homes look old and dilapidated, and I don't appreciate it. That's all I have to say. Thank you, and thank you for coming and speaking with us.
Thank you so much for your comments, and we can hear you loud and clear, so that's very good. Is there anyone else?
Thank you.
Anyone else teleconferencing, like to speak? Anyone else? Okay, well, we'll go ahead and see, have some people here local, how about Carrie Davis? Welcome, Carrie.
My name is Carrie Davis Medill, M-E-D-I-L-L. I live at 5654 Nectar Avenue, and I'm an original owner, and I've lived in my home for 15 years. I went through the housing crisis, crash, I went through a horrible divorce, and it took everything I had to keep my hands. I live in a community that is beautiful with neighbors. The developer saying that this housing style, price, whatever it is, is not in demand anymore is absolutely ridiculous. The houses in my community sell almost immediately. I've had people ask me, "When you get ready to sell, please let me know." So I don't know what type of marketing he's done, but I know that that neighborhood is in demand. It is a very nice neighborhood in Hemet. I would also like to talk about the light at Lake and Florida, that's a serious concern. There's an elementary school two blocks away, there's been accidents, there's been fatalities, these are all relevant. Also, is everybody aware that we're going to develop 80 more houses, and we don't have a manned fire station? And people have talked about concerns for fire, that's a big deal to us. We have medics 12 minutes from here to our house if there's a fire truck in the station, that's relevant. Street improvements, traffic calming devices, keep in mind, all of these 80 homes, their cars, their people, are all coming through our community where we have children playing. We have an established community. Our houses are not lack of maintenance. I'm sorry, but you can drive through the community, some of them might need some paint, they're 15 years old, some of them are rentals. The scenic highway setback requirement, all of this is absolutely ridiculous. My tax bill, I've been paying it for 15 years, where's my money? I paid $500 since 19, I'm sorry, since 2014, I checked today, where's my money? And there's still no requirement, I have a problem. Some of my comments weren't brought up tonight, and I don't understand why the rush to put this project in place. Property's been vacant for 15 years. I would be more than happy to advocate for it to be developed, all it does is improve my investment, but not at any expense. Again, that neighborhood's nice for a reason, because we keep it that way. It's in demand, one-story houses are in demand, that side of Hemet is in demand. I understand D.R. Horton is a big builder, I don't care, make money, but not on my dime. I'm not sure, again, like I said, why staff are pushing this through. I know that you'll hear from my other neighbors, and you'll see that we're not going to sit back. You know, I've been in Hemet a long time, I've been on the PTA, I have valid concerns, and I would hope that you as a planning commissioner would listen to us. And I appreciate you knowing my investment, and yes, I would love to see it developed, but it is my community, it is single-story. Tuscan and Spanish does not match arts and crafts, craftsmen-style homes, which are timeless, they're not outdated, that's a style that's timeless. You go to San Pedro, you go to Pasadena, and you go to my community, those homes are still in demand, and they're beautiful. I appreciate your time, and I hope that you'll listen to our concerns and make this developer build something that aesthetically matches our community. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Medill, thanks for your comments. Carol Kendrick, would you like to speak? Carol, a different role for you tonight.
Yes. And I do this with a heavy heart, because I know the challenges. And I did have a prepared speech, but I'm going to go off. Good evening, Chairman Obermeyer and Planning Commissioners, my name is Carol Kendrick, and I live at 5476 Nectar Avenue, and I've resided there for 20 years. It's my first home. Most of you know me and my quality of work, and for those that don't know me, I've been working in the planning field for 22 years, 15 years as a planner, 13 of those years with the city of Hemet. I've reviewed this proposed project, and it does not comply with the general plan policies, municipal code, the single-family design guidelines, the scenic highway, setback design manual, or the underlying conditions of approval. You cannot make three of the required findings. So I was going to go just highlight a couple of things, but D.R. Horton brought up facts. The staff report that went to city council on February 25th only discussed waiving the underground requirement. It did not discuss deferring landscape requirements for the scenic highway. I did read their attachment, but the staff report did not address that, that is not what the city council approved per the minutes. The conditions of approval were also not changed. The underlying map condition says that the project shall comply with the scenic highway design manual, which requires it to be installed prior to the first occupancy. That track number 31620 has not had any occupancy permits. It is the applicant's responsibility to install that landscaping prior to the first occupancy. Also, they are building all the lots that are rebutting Florida Avenue. The 27 lots that are not under their ownership, could, there could be an agreement when that gets developed, that they pay their fair share and it gets reimbursed to the developer. If this does not get required at the first occupancy, it'll never get developed. Also, I ask that the project be required to be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood and architecture as laid out in the Hemet Municipal Code and your findings, which say the architectural design of the project is compatible with the character of the surrounding neighborhood, not neighborhoods that are across the other side of Lincoln or Four Seasons that's on the West End boundary that staff is suggesting. It also says that it will enhance the visual character of the neighborhood through good aesthetic use of materials, textures, and colors. They are not proposing to do that, they have no change in building materials, or very little, when our project has quite a bit. We have neighbors that have a six-foot grade deferential that will have two to three homes backing up to them, looking in their backyard. I strongly encourage that the planning commission ask the applicant to go back to the board and revise this to make it consistent with the city's guidelines, general plan, and zoning, and that they work with the community. And for the community meeting, I was told by, I was told that they would be invited, so I had no contact information for them, but said that they were welcome to come. So that concludes my comments, but the community is ready to appeal this if it's approved. We are going to protect our community and help preserve it, which is what the general plan requires. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kendrick. Welcome, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Patrick Savage, 244 Orchard Avenue, as a resident in the adjoining community. I'm going to curtail some of my remarks because they've already been addressed by both the builder and by Carol. I have two problems, none of them frankly are my direct problem. I have an objection to the two-story house, because in rereading the plan, there is a possibility that a two-story house could sit within 15 feet of the back fence line. And my neighbors, who do have a lot adjoining the property directly, are sitting there, as Carol said, up to three houses, in fact, three two-story houses, looking down on their backyard pool. Not exactly a semblance of privacy. Not exactly a semblance of privacy. Secondly, as also been mentioned, is the fence. The fence is in dilapidated condition, and in fact, I would venture to say that if we tried to go and sandwich another fence up right next to it, you'd end up destroying the existing cedar fence. What makes it difficult is that the current homeowner, who we just said, is, it's their responsibility to repair that fence. However, if another fence vinyl is put up against it, that makes maintenance of that fence impossible, because the finished side of the fence, believe it or not, is on the open lots that are there now. The finished side of the fence that you have to get to to replace the alternating three-inch and five-inch wide boards is on the outside, so you've got to get to that to be able to replace it, maintain it. And again, as Denny said in her teleconference, what about the space in between, which leaves it open to weeds and vermin? That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you, Mr. Savage. You must know the next speaker, it's Sue Savage.
This is so hard.
Okay. Name and address for the record, please, and welcome.
My name is Sue Savage. I live at 244 Orchard Avenue, and already tonight I have two new additional concerns, one presented by staff who mentioned in her presentation that there would be three stories houses, and she can go back and look at the comments, three stories. I did not know there were three stories that are proposed, but that is what she said. The other comment that I want to make is the fencing, oh, before I start, I, Mr. Boyd, we...
I'm sorry, you have to address this commission. I'm sorry, it's a legal issue. And I don't believe there is three stories, so do...
I hope not, but that's what she said.
Right, we'll make sure of that, but I don't...
That's what she said. You can go back and look at the comments. I really want this project. I really want to figure this out, so the really busy thing. My second new concern, so excuse me a minute. He asked about the fencing. The fencing that they're going to put in, wall, brick wall anything, that they're going to put in all the way up to here and all the way up to here, because that's where their project starts, okay? The problem with that is you're not going to be able to see...
Go ahead, John.
You're not going to be able to see this, what's it called? Visual obstruction. There are people who walk here all the time, okay? You're not going to be able to see, you're going to have cars running over people. When they build this fence, they need to make sure that there's visualization here and here, from cars turning on from Lake to Orchard.
Ma'am, we need to, we need to have you on the microphone.
Have the microphone so it can be recorded.
All right. So anyway... Concerned about the fencing that is going to be on Lake Street, going onto Orchard Avenue, and blind spots that are going to occur from the rock fencing. So then, number three, I saw nowhere that they have agreed to the undergrounding of the communication cable running the length of Florida. I know he said that that's what they've done, but I saw nowhere in that report. It says that all undergrounding was waived. Well, that's the communication cable that runs the entire length. With respect to the high wires, those are primary lines owned by SoCal Edison. You're not going to underground those, because they're primary lines that go all the way up to Idlewild. So I get that part, that they're not going to underground, but the idea that they're not going to underground a communications cable that runs down Florida, comes across Lake Street, then goes underground into a dirt lot, as is required. So, yes, that needs to be undergounded, and tonight's the first time I've heard that they were going to actually do that. So then, he stands up here and he says, first of all, I didn't know there were weeds, okay? Second of all, so that means that entire track 48 that's going to have all the opportunity for weeds, he's not going to know that there's weeds there either. They're that high, okay? So, third of all, broken project, and how hard it's going to be to make money. He is walking into a project that is completely developed. The streets are in, the sidewalk, well, not the sidewalk, but all the lighting, the overhead lighting, all the utilities, all completely done. So it isn't like he's got it too rough. The development's been done. What he's got to do now is build some houses and make some money, and I have no problem with all that. I'm all for that, okay? So then, but, that whole thing about that scenic highway thing, it's going to happen that that is going to be built first, okay? Then, I was there for the eminent domain. It's interesting, he says that he's reached out to the owner. The owner says he is not, so I don't know, it's a matter of who you're going to believe, right? Who are you going to believe? So the city could reach out and indeed offer eminent domain, and maybe you don't pay. I don't know. But the idea that someone could step up, should step up, okay, before any of this stuff is approved, while you still have the opportunity and the option, would be very much appreciated. Let me see, I think that is it. Oh, that's it. I really thank you for your time. I appreciate your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Savage, for your comments. Welcome. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Emery Pap, and I reside at 27320 Big Springs Ranch Road in Hemet, California. I'm here this evening to express my opposition to the proposed project. While I appreciate what Mr. Boyd and D.R. Horton are trying to do with this property, this project is not ready for development. The project is not consistent with the design guidelines. I've prepared a letter that I sent to staff. I'm hoping they provided it to you this evening. If they have not, I can make copies for you. I don't want to go through my whole letter, because many of the comments would be repetitive of what others have made, but the project is not consistent with the general, with the design guidelines. There are general plan goals and policies that specifically talk about neighborhood fit, and three, two, full two-thirds, two-story homes put into a single-family development that is 100% single-story homes is not a neighborhood fit. With respect to MSHCP, TUMF fees, and any other development impact fees, I understand the waiving of those for a vesting tentative track map. However, the other map, map number 25168-1, that has six units, that should not be exempt from the payment of any impact fees. With respect to some of the general plan goals that I feel that the project is inconsistent with, I'm not going to go through all 15 of them that I spelled out in my letter, but there are a few that are, I believe, are very important, one of which is circulation element goal, I'm sorry, policy C 1.3, which is to maintain a level of service C or better for roadways related to a project. The general plan requires that. There is no mention of that in the staff report. The staff has relied on an environmental, environmental document, it's the negative declaration that was prepared 17 years ago. Conditions have changed in 17 years. There have been cumulative impacts from development projects that have occurred during those 17 years, including a new center median. There have been accidents in the vicinity and fatalities relating to those accidents. At a minimum, a traffic impact analysis is required by the general plan for all new developments to indicate that the streets will operate and maintain a level of service C or better. Absent that analysis, you cannot make the finding that this project is exempt from review under CEQA. Excuse me. Circulation element goal C 1.11, or 111. Parkway design should emphasize the landscaping of parkways. The conditions of approval have effectively de-emphasized this by stating that the scenic highway setback area will be developed with, upon issuance of the final building permit. Also, the circulation element goal or policy C 1-1, 1.15, all new development projects shall be, require developments to meet roadway and intersection performance standards and/or contribute their fair share toward the improvements pursuant to a traffic impact analysis, which again, has not been prepared. Also, staff proposes to waive TUMF, so they will not be contributing their fair share. Who's going to pay for those fair share of improvements citywide if they're not participating in that? Per the original staff report, the density for the proposed project is 4.3 units per acre. However, the target intensity...